Good evening. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Cholo City Council to order by real call. See that all council members are present, with the exception of Councilwoman Kukavas, who's been excused tonight. We'd like to welcome those of you who are here with us tonight. We have a group from the Cholo High School where we welcome our youth here tonight, as well as those who may be watching at home or other people that may be watching by some other teological device. So, we'd like to begin this evening with invocation. Those of you who'd like to join us in prayer, I will lead us in the invocation. Following the invocation, we'll be asking the Cholo High School Showbiz Choir to lead us in our national anthem tonight. Would you please all stand?
Our dear, kind heavenly Father, we're grateful for the opportunity we have to meet together this evening as residents and members of the Cholo City Council and for the people that are here this evening. Father, we're grateful to have a youth group with us tonight. We pray that Thou might watch over and bless and protect us as we make decisions for our community, that we might do so with Thy guidance and direction. We're grateful for the moisture that we've received and pray that it will continue, that we might be able to have a wonderful winter. Father, we're grateful for all that we have and for the things that Thou always given us and pray that Thou will continue to bless this area. We ask you to bless our leaders that over this nation, that they'll have a desire to make good choices, that we'll be able to do those things that will be pleasing and be able to build this country and the unity that we've had in the past, Father, that we might be able to make good the choices that we make. And we ask for Thy guidance always in the name of Thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Do you have the pledge? I'm gonna have the pledge.
Oh, say can you see, are the dawn's early lights? Were so proudly we hailed, as the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars, through the perilous fight? O'er the rapports we watched, were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the host's stinging air, gave proof through the night, that our flag was still there? Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free, the land of the free? And the home of the brave?
That was great.
Thank you. That was fantastic. I appreciate that. One of my favorite songs. Thanks for sharing that with us tonight. That was great. First item tonight we have is call to the public. Any citizen wishing to speak on a matter that's not on the agenda may do so at this time. Keep your comments to three minutes and it needs to be directed to a council this whole. See, nobody moved. I'll close call to the public and come back to special events. Tonight, we have a presentation by the Cholo...
They had their hands up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Rennie.
I would like to say that that's the greatest rendition that I have heard in years. You guys are fantastic. Great job, for real.
That was great. I would turn the time back to you guys now for a special presentation of the Cholo High School Showbiz Choir. Ms. Whipple.
Well, this is Showbiz and we are delighted to be here with you tonight. We've also been asked to put in a little bit of a plug to announce to the White Mountain community and to Cholo citizens that Feast of Carols, the 31st Annual Feast of Carols, will be coming up December 3rd, 4th, and 5th. We will be hosting that event at Whipple Ranch Elementary School. Tickets go on sale November 17th, and we would like to invite any and all community members who haven't had the chance to see that show to come and see it. It is one of the best-kept secrets in the White Mountains, and a lot of people that come to it that have never been there before say, "Wow, this is an amazing experience." It is a Christmas show, and these students that are behind me are the stars of the show, and they worked very diligently to put together this six-course Renaissance Christmas dinner theater show for you. So, come with an appetite. As I said, tickets will go on sale November 17th to the public. They are $8 for the dessert night on Thursday and $20 for the full feast on Friday and Saturday. So, if you're in the mood for some great Christmas fun and lots of wonderful Christmas music, this is the show to come and see. And what a better way to showcase the wonderful youth that we have here in Cholo. They are truly among some of the greatest kids that I have ever taught, and I am so grateful to be their teacher. And we have one more piece for you tonight. It's not Christmas. We haven't started it yet. We start that tomorrow. But we will be performing an American folk song for you called Shannon Doe. We hope you enjoy it. We hope to see everybody at Feast of Carols here in a few weeks. Thank you for letting us be here tonight.
Thank you.
Oh, Shannon Doe. Oh, Shannon Doe. Oh, Shannon Doe. Oh, Shannon Doe. I long to hear you. Away, you rolling river. Oh, Shannon Doe. I long to hear you. Cross the white, cross the white Missouri. Shannon Doe. Shannon Doe. Shannon Doe. Your Shannon Doe. You rolling river, oh, Shannon Doe. I love your daughter. Away, I bound away. Cross the white Missouri. Cross the white Missouri. Oh, Shannon Doe. I'm sure you'll hear you. Away, you rolling river. Oh, Shannon Doe. I'm not deceiving you. Cross the white... Shannon Doe. Shannon Doe.
Before you leave, just come by here. We really hide each one of you. Shake this. Come right around. Just come right up.
I'm offering candy.
That was awesome. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. So great. Good job. Thank you. How are you doing? Thank you. Great. Thank you very much. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Good to go. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Catch you later. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Enjoyed it.
Thank you. Wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you. And a very special thank you.
Kinda need to know that we're in good hands with our youth coming up, so that was awesome. Thanks again for being here.
You know, Mayor, I can't help myself. Those kids have got to be really serious about their practice and presentation and what they do to get ready. And I think oftentimes, we forget the leader, the director. Without a fabulous director, they would not sound that way, no matter how much they practiced. I just want to make that note. Thank you.
Thank you. Special treat. Okay, we have the consent calendar. The items tonight we have is consideration of the acceptance of East Whipple Road improvements, and then we also have minutes of a joint study session, October 20th, and the regular meeting of October 20th. So, any discussion on those? Councilmember Crittenden?
Move we approve this consent calendar?
A motion is our second. Second by Councilmember Hatch. Any other discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that that pass six to zero. Next item is new business. First item we have tonight is a consideration of the approval of closeout of grants for construction phase for obstruction removal and authorization of funds to the Federal Aviation Administration. Mr. Boyd.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilman.
Evening.
We're pleased to come to you after a fairly lengthy project with the results and the outcome of the project. You'll all recall that we brought this to you at some point in the past, and the project was actually the undertaking, the burying of the APS power lines in the approach for runway 06, which is parallels, these power lines parallel both Highway 77 and Thornton I think we had about two years total in the project, so we're happy that it's finally over. During the course of the project, because of the fact that APS owned the property, they required an initial prepayment of $2,430,552.37 to begin this project. And at that time, the agreement we had with them was that at the end of the project, there'd be a final accounting of all the costs, and if there were additional funds required, we would have to pay more, and if they came in under budget, we would have a refund to deal with. Well, fortunately, they came in well under budget, and we did end up with a refund. Now, that $2.4 million figure that I mentioned was shared jointly during the, with the customary percentages by FAA. It's 95% FAA, 2.5% ADOT, and 2.5% City of Cholo. The final accounting rendered a figure that indicates we owe FAA a refund of $330,491 and ADOT a refund of $1,059.80. Below that, you'll see the final cost breakdown for the entire project. The FAA portion was $2,772,255. ADOT, $72,954. And the City of Cholo, $72,954.59. I'm sorry, the ADOT was $9.54.09. The 50 cent difference was 50 cents that normally would have been covered by the FAA, but FAA has a policy in which they round down, so we have to pick that up. So, that's why there's a minor difference. Total for the project, $2,918,163.68. This includes, this 2.9 million includes the APS portion, portion which is $2,78,367.37, $796,796.31 for Cholo construction, and $43,000 for our consultant, Armstrong Consulting. We are asking you, and we recommend, that you authorize dispersment of the refund checks to the FAA in the amount of $330,000 for, excuse me, $330,491 and ADOT in the amount of $1,059.80, and approve the closeout of this project and all the grants related to the funding of the project. Anyone have any questions?
Councilmember Crittenden?
So, I understand this money was from a grant to begin with?
Correct.
And so, it's not money coming out of the coffers or the citizens of Cholo?
Absolutely correct. Absolutely correct. This is strictly a pass-through on the refund. It's going back. The money was prepaid by both FAA and ADOT, and we are sending a portion of that back. This does not represent a cost to the citizens of Cholo whatsoever.
Perfect. Councilmember Alsop?
Thank you, Mayor. Ever since this has been done, I know it's been a long process, and for numbers of years, they wanted that line down and everything else. What's the comments from the pilots or anything else coming into Cholo now?
Everybody's really happy with this. I mean, obviously, we, we as pilots, all believe that you should bury pilot, uh, excuse me, bury power lines, not pilots. We're all happy with the, with the, with the project and the outcome of the project. The only concern that I had was that we might, we might have seen people that were a little bit more willing to make a lower angle, a climb angle on departure, and we really haven't had any problems. So, I think it's worked out really well for us.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Hatch?
You know, I still drive down 77. I'd look out there to see if I can see that fluorescent ball waving in the sky. I'm so glad to see this in the ground.
It is good to see them gone.
Thank you very much for all the work that you've done.
Long overdue.
And to ADOT and to FAA.
And a good improvement to our community. Look for a motion at this time. Councilmember Hatch?
I move to authorize the dispersment of refund checks to the Federal Aviation Administration for $330,491, and to the Arizona Department of Transportation for $1,059, I'm sorry, $1,059.80, and to approve closeout of the FAA and ADOT grants related to those refunds and the construction phase for the obstruction removal at the Cholo Regional Airport.
You have a motion? Second, second by Councilmember Alsop. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that that pass six to zero. Almost be fun to just send the Federal Aviation, and we're working on it. We'll get to it as soon as we can. About five years sending the check.
There you go.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next item we have is a consideration of approval of budget transfers for Old Downtown Pedestrian Improvement Project. Mr. Hemisaw.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Back in 2010, the City of Cholo received notice of a $742,000 Transportation Enhancement, or TE, grant award for ADOT. The award, which was, that required a local match of $42,315, which is 5.7%, has intended to construct another phase of the pedestrian and traffic streetscape improvements from Hall, from 9th to 8th Street, and on 9th Street, from City Hall to McNeil. Project was separated into two phases. The first phase was the design portion, excuse me, design portion utilizing ADOT on-call consultant with a total budget of $144,000, and that has been completed. Now, the second phase is the construction portion with a budget of $603,370. About $568,000 of that is the federal funds and the city match of $34,392. Final plans were bid by ADOT. The low bid for the work came in at $775,000. The grant requires that ADOT coordinate construction administration, field engineering, and include a construction contingency totaling an additional 20%. Now, the final cost to award the project is $930,000, with the current low bidder resulting in a shortage of approximately $327,000. City has been working with its partners at the Northern Arizona Council of Governments, or NACOG, and ADOT to find additional TE funding to help with the overage. Otherwise, the project or the bids would be rejected, scope of work would be reduced, landscape, pedestrian lighting would be removed, and the project would be, would be rebid in the spring. A collaborative effort between NACOG, the town of Camp Verde, and the City of Cholo has identified $233,000 of additional TE funding for the project. The town of Camp Verde has sent $233,000 of TE funding to the City of Cholo, and NACOG has backfilled that funding with STP reserves in the NACOG region. Unlike the city's project, theirs qualified for either type of funding. With the additional funding allocated for the project, project budget is as follows. Currently, there's federal funds, $801,978. The city's matching portion of that, 5.7%, is $45,713. So, total funding of $847,691. City has already set an additional $5,051 to ADOT prior to the project being bid, so sorry for all the numbers. The total existing funding at ADOT right now for the project is at $852,742. Once again, the required funding for the award was a little over $930,000, resulting in a shortage of $78,084. Currently, ADOT is holding a refund to the City of Cholo for the Whipple Roadway project, and that was consent item A. The refund is for the amount of $96,724.54 and is being refunded to the city now that project has been completed and closed with ADOT. Staff is requesting to utilize this project refund to further help in closing the funding gap for the Old Downtown Pedestrian Improvement Project. Staff recommends transferring a portion of the Whipple Road project refund in the amount of $78,084 to the Old Downtown Pedestrian Project. The remaining Whipple Roadway project refund in the amount of $18,640.54 will be transferred to the Streets CIP Improvement Account and held until this project is completed. Sorry for all the numbers. There's probably more numbers than that in letters, but I'm available for any questions.
Have any questions of Councilmember Alsop?
Thank you, Mayor. Shane, I got a question. Okay, so, everything going down 9th Street has been completed then, so the, except for from Hunning to McNeil, correct?
That is correct.
And then, anything going down East Hall? So, the, anything from East Hunning, south, and then Hall, 9th and Hall going west, that's what's going to be in this next amount of money that you're just, you just requested, correct?
Um, yeah, and actually, what, what this does is it installs landscaping and pedestrian lighting on the portion that has already been completed from City Hall down to Hunning, so there's already concrete and parking in place. And from that point on, then you start all the concrete curb gutter and the pedestrian lighting and landscaping from the intersection of Hunning down to McNeil, and then it is from 8th Street to 9th Street on Hall, but just the south side of the road.
So, the money that you're asking for right now, that will finish this whole project then?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
In those limits.
Any other questions, comments?
I'll make a comment. It's not going to finish the whole project, because we still got...
In those limits, yeah. We still have north side of Hall we need to do, and we have other roadways downtown that are next.
I just want to make sure everybody didn't think that East Hall's going to be completely done on, on the north and south side. It's just the...
This funny just handles the south side of that, that, from 8th to 9th Street, just the south side of Hall.
I'm just going to make a comment that we have some business, local businesses in this area that hopefully we can work with them to minimize the impact of business being shut down at all, and hopefully, you know, keep their driveways open and, and maybe, you know, maybe during that time, we could give them the benefit of the doubt, maybe with some little extra signage or something, just to, you know, let them know that during construction time, we're still open, you know, or something like that. Because that's, that's important, that we don't lose some businesses because we're revamping our roads down in that area.
You bet, and we've been in contact with all the homeowners and business owners along the scope of the project here in those businesses, and our goal is to get this going as early as spring as possible and get it done.
The workers that work down there, they gotta eat lunch at those businesses. That would help. It's something the feds do to keep that happening. Do we have any other comments or questions on this?
Down here.
It's been a long process of moving money and making it happen. I know it's costing us quite a bit more than we anticipated, but it seems like, you know, we appreciate, you know, Camp Verde working with, and those of you on staff who was able to reach out and find that and make that happen with them, because that's great partnership in there.
Yeah, we appreciate their help.
Look for a motion at this time. I'll make one. I move to authorize and approve associated budget transfers for the Old Linden Pedestrian Improvement Project. You have a second by Vice Mayor. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? See that that pass six to zero. Thank you, Shane. Next item we have tonight is summary of current events. City council members wishing to share some things of current events, may do so. Vice Mayor?
I just want to put a plug in for everybody that came out and supported not only the trunk retreat, but Billby's haunted house. He, he did really well over there. I don't know the final count. That's up to him. I have no idea where he's donating all the proceeds to, but he said he did twice to three times more than he did the year before, so all that you, all the, all you people in the community that came out to support that, I know he really appreciates that, and I know it was a big success this year. As far as trunk or treat goes, too, it looked crowded over there all night, so thank you guys, all that came out and supported that.
Sweet. Thank you. The other reports. This time, I'll come, my report here. This last week, we had a busy week. The city, we had on Wednesday, Councilmember Hatch and Councilmember Crittenden and the city manager was able to go down to a Choya Power Plant, and we toured that plant with APS. We were there a good part of the day, going through and looking at their plan that they have for the future of, of power in this area and what their projected plans are for that plant as some of the new EPA guidelines come, come on. On Thursday, last Thursday, we had a retreat with staff and council. It was a great day to, to talk about plans and ideas that we have coming up. And then, on last Friday, spent the day with other staff members, chief of police, as well as our city attorney and our city manager, as we selected, looked at reviews and plans submitted to us by different contractors that were looking at building our, our public safety building. So, it was a day that we, we spent going through and listening to presentations. I appreciated that. I'd like to just, our condolences go out to remembering a great legislator, Jack Brown from over in St. Johns and, and that area. He's a relative of Morgan Bowne, our city attorney, but he died on Wednesday. He was 86 years old, and his funeral will be held Monday, November 9th, at 10:00 a.m. at the LDS State Center in St. Johns with visitation hours, visitation one hour prior to that for viewing. He said that Mr. Brown said he intended to stay involved in politics, but as he put it, "Keep those guys in line down there." You know, he's one of the guys that worked both sides and visionary in some of the freeways and some of the things that took place in the Phoenix and the greater metropolitan area, but his love was for the rural Arizona. And I think it was great that Arizona Republic in 2008 named Brown to its list of modern Arizona legislators shining stars, and there was only 50 people that they listed, and he was one of them. So, he did a great, and our condolences go to the family as, as well to our city attorney, Mr. Brown, and all that he stood for. This time, I'll turn the time to our city manager for his report.
Just to, to remind the council and the citizens public, the VFW will be holding its annual Memorial Day service to honor all veterans next Wednesday. Memorial Day service to honor all veterans next Wednesday, November 11th at 11:00 a.m. at the Veterans Memorial in front of City Hall. We thank and honor all those who have served and are still serving in armed services. The Sholo Library employees have created a story walk at Sholo Bluff Trail, which is a, which, what they do is they literally tear apart a book and place it along the trail to foster literacy and the love of the outdoors. The story, "Over the Mountain" by Ezra Jack Keats begins at the trailhead at South White Mountain Road and covers the first quarter mile of the 1.5-mile trail. It's an easy trail to hike and we encourage all to go check out that story walk. The Family Aquatic Center will be closed for two weeks for annual maintenance beginning Friday, November 27th. The pool will be reopened on Monday, December 14th. We want to thank three local Eagle Scouts who volunteered their time and labor organizing and building two community service projects. Two brothers, William and Tim Shipatello, constructed a lodge pole fencing at McCarty Park and Karsten Brady built and installed an information kiosk at the city park at the Clark Road entrance. And we commend the young, those young men and all those that helped them for their service and volunteerism. And last thing I'd report is the Community Fast is next week, November 8th through the 14th, and we encourage all to participate in that Community Fast. And if you desire to make a donation to help those in need in the area, you can do so at any bank or at City Hall. Thank you.
So the celebration of that Community Fast is on the 22nd of November at the auditorium at 6:00 p.m. on a Sunday evening. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? And next item that we have is scheduling of meetings. Councilmembers wishing to schedule a meeting may do so at this time. No other meetings they want to meet? And just remind you of the combined meeting we have with, in November here with the town of Lakeside and can we announce that?
Yeah, it's, it's November 19th at 6:00 p.m. Originally scheduled with town of Pine Top Lakeside, but we've expanded that to include the town councils of Taylor and Snowflake.
It'll be on the 19th. At this time, we need to go into executive session. The items of our executive session is an annual evaluation of the city magistrate, possible purchase of property, and the minutes of the October 6th. I need a motion to move into executive session. We have a motion, a second by councilmember Hatch. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that that pass six to zero. This time we'll move to executive session. Thank you.